Good evening. Oh, I love this. I've got to practice this. I'm told I don't do this well. Town meeting of the town of Halifax is reconvening at 7:30. The quorum for this meeting going forward only has been reduced to 75. In spite of that fact, we have 110 people attending. All right. Mrs. Gaynor, would you like to open our meeting?
Nope, we're all set.
Oh, see, something we don't have to do. Well, here's what we do have to do, because I know all of you care about this town and care about this country. Please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, a couple, I guess, announcements that are important. One, when we're voting with the green and red pieces of paper, please only put up one or the other. Don't put them both back to back. The problem is if you're voting in favor of something and the counters go by you, they do a double check by trying to come back this way. And if they see a red where there used to be a green, it's going to be confusing. So hold up one or the other when you're voting, not both of them. Okay? I appreciate that. The counters appreciate that, too. All right, one other note of record-keeping here. There was to be scheduled a special town meeting with one article only. That article is also included in the regular town meeting. It is Article 37. And it will be handled by lottery as we do with all the other items. We will not need to call a special town meeting. But if you're interested in that article, it is Article 37, so be aware when it comes up. And the other thing that we want to start with is we left off with what we have referred to as a consent agenda of five items that we would like to be considered as one unless there are any questions. If there are questions or need to be asked or answered, simply say "hold" on the articles, and I want to make sure I get these correct. We are talking about Article 5, Article 6, Article 14, Article 15, Article 38. Are there any holds on any of those articles? I'm sorry, you need to stand up to the microphone so I can hear you.
Dennis, can you repeat them?
Yes, absolutely. The articles that we're talking about on the consent agenda are Article 5, Article 6, Article 14, Article 15, and Article 38. Yes, sir.
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mompontas Street. I just, I, these articles isn't my problem. I just want to make sure that the quorum is going to be at 100 afterwards. And this is just a special thing because of COVID and that it is not permanent that we are dropping down to this number.
I'm sorry, you need to speak up and repeat that because... What are you just saying? Please, again?
This 75...
Correct.
That we now have a quorum.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that it's not going to continue to next year's town meeting and so on. And that it's just because of COVID and it is going to carry on.
That is correct. Just to clarify, the quorum of a town meeting is set by bylaw and can only be changed by the town with the exception of the governor and the state's declaration of an emergency. And if you're interested, the actual allowance is to be able to reduce town quorum to 10% of the normal quorum. So it was possible for us as a town, on my recommendation as town moderator and a vote of the board of selectmen, to reduce it to 10. We didn't think that was appropriate with input from me. 75 is only for this town meeting. And the session going forward for this town meeting, it does not include anything else. So to your point, the regular quorum would stand for regular town meetings. Okay? Any holds on these articles in the consent agenda? Yes, sir. Say again.
Mel Conroy, 7 Berge Road. I wanted to ask why we are grouping these articles together as they seem unrelated. And there is wording in each of them that we're not sure on the source of funding, whether it's reason appropriate or from available funds.
Yeah, the intention, as I understand of the consent agenda, is that normally these are articles that are passed without a lot of discussion. But is there any, do anyone want to add to these being put together as a consent agenda?
Dennis Hyde. If you want to wait a minute, I'll get you the handout. The handout's out there. We had it, in fact, at the town meeting back on Saturday and this past Thursday. There are motions on the handout for each of the articles. What we did was set up a system that allowed us to pass over 16 unrelated articles in one vote without objection. The same basis is for five articles with the motions that are in the handout to be approved. If you want, I'll go get one right now. And I don't know where you are right now, but I'll walk it down to you.
Dennis, could we read the source of funding for each one of those?
Can we read the source of funding for each one of the articles?
Dennis, so let's walk them through. For Article 5, that's a series of revolving funds. You'll notice the table on your warrant, page 31. The sources of funding for Article 5 are the fees or other revenues generated for each of those revolving funds. For Article 6, Sandy, if you can correct me, were the 50,000 coming from water? Obviously from the water department. The 75 is reason appropriate or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Article 6 is the reserve fund that we set up every year, 75,000 from reason appropriate and 50,000 from water retained earnings. Number 14 is the Plymouth County Extension Service, which is $150, which would be coming from undesignated fund balance. Number 15 is the Chapter 90 money. Accepting the Chapter 90 money, $269,350, which comes from the state, and this is merely to allow us to spend the money. And then number 38 is for $857.60, which came in from the state. It's a surcharge on Uber rides that comes to the town, and we have to vote just to be able to spend the money.
Thank you. Any indication of holds for other questions? Mr. Assistant Moderator, any indication of anyone with a hold?
No, we do not.
Okay. You are being asked to vote the consent agenda on the articles that were outlined? Yes is passing all of those articles. Which is green and red would be no. So all those in favor of passing the consent agenda, please signify by raising just your green card. Okay, thank you. And all of those, anyone who is opposed, please just your red cards. Okay, Mr. Gaynor, what are we seeing there?
Unanimous vote yes to pass.
Okay, the consent agenda passes. The rest of the articles, as is the custom and voted by bylaw, are going to be through a lottery system, so they're going to come up randomly. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Gaynor what the first article is up.
29.
Article 29.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $27,500 from the undesignated fund balance for crosswalk control devices and their installation.
Second. Hang on one second. Can people hear that? Because I'm having trouble, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Just, we all need to be doing a better job of standing and getting closer to the microphones.
We'll do it one more time.
Yeah, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $27,500 from undesignated fund balance for crosswalk control devices and their installation.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, can the Finance Committee clarify? Because the number that we were given was 27,800. I just want to make sure we all have the same number.
I'm going to correct that. We had a couple of different figures here. I'll move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $27,800.
Second.
Can I ask where you're going to put these devices?
Sorry?
Where are the devices going to be put?
Can we hang on one second until we get into questions and discussion? We just need to get the motion and second and a recommendation of the Finance Committee. We'll be right back to you. So with the figure of 27,800, what is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Now, please, and please stand as close as you can to that microphone because I'm having trouble hearing you as well.
Sorry, I'm...
No, it's okay. Don't worry.
Where are the devices being put?
I will tell you.
Thank you.
At present, they're proposed for Plymouth Street, which is Route 106, at Home Street for a crosswalk.
Oh, thank you.
Lyden Lane and Mompontas Street. Plymouth Street, also, again, Route 106. And Indian Path Road, which is just down the street here. And Plymouth Street and Hemlock Lane, which is out in front of the town hall.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Other questions?
In the back.
Oh, in the back. I'm sorry. Please.
I just heard the different spots. Now, with the one here in front of the school for the most part, isn't there a state thing that we need sidewalks on those side and a legal crosswalk before we maintain that and put that in? I believe there's some sidewalk thing with a down... You know what I mean, with a downturn before there is a crosswalk there for it to be legal?
I'm going to ask the Highway Surveyor to speak to that.
Yes, Bob is right. That crosswalk is illegal. We don't have any place for it to land. We're going to have to build a sidewalk on the right side of the road to make this legal. And we have some of the stuff at the barn, so that is no cost included in this.
Did everybody hear that? Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion or questions?
No indication of discussion here.
All those in favor of passing Article 29, please signify by raising your green card. Thank you. Any opposed, please signify by raising your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
27 in favor, one opposed.
Okay, Article 29 passes. Next article.
Article 39.
Article 39.
Alan Diaz, Snow Street.
Yeah, you need to either move that closer to you or down or step really close to that, please.
I move to vote, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $15,000 from undesignated fund balance for repairs to the cap landfill on the Hemlock Lane dump, including all engineering and associated costs.
Thank you. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Article 39, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Sir?
These funds are going to be used for some, for a drainage breach that occurred at the landfill. This is the second time that it's happened. We're going to do some of this work in-house. And we're looking for the 15,000.
Questions about Article 39?
Mr. Moderator? Before the questions asked by the other members here, can we have a total on what the the undesignated fund balance is?
Trying to get any answer for you, the undesignated fund balance?
The undesignated fund balance is $1,191,655.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion?
Negative, no indication here.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Do we have any estimates?
You want to identify yourself, please?
Amy Trup, Tyne Hill Side Ave. Are there any estimates and who are they from?
See if we can get an answer for you.
Yes, we do have some estimates. They were received by the Highway Surveyor. I do not know who they were, but he sent out some bids for the work.
Indication of other discussion? Yes? Oh, in the back.
In the back.
No, in the back, yes.
I did receive three estimates. And the most was $70,000 and the least was the $15,000. One is the engineering firm that the town has to monitor the landfill. And the one that we're thinking of rewarding is Penny out of Carver.
Penny? If you're going to be asking questions, no one else can hear those questions. And it would be helpful if you stepped to the microphone. Thank you.
I didn't, so who are the contractors?
The first one is the engineering firm that the town has for, the board of health has for doing the maintenance or watching over the landfill. I'm not sure of the name of the company. And that was the $70,000. And Penny is the one that we're going to go with, hopefully. And they're out of Carver.
And what was the third one?
There was Rick Mary, and he never gave a price.
Thank you.
He pulled out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Gaynor, any questions? Any indication of discussion?
No indication of discussion.
Okay, all those in favor of Article 39, please signify by raising your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
32 in favor, one opposed.
Article 39 passes.
46. 46.
I'm sorry.
46.
Article 46.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to amend the code of the town of Halifax as printed in the warrant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Moderator, this is the second phase of an EPA mandated compliance regarding runoff discharge into the rivers and lakes and streams. And this is something we have to do.
Continue to, I know, move forward to that mic. Sorry.
I apologize. This is the second phase of an EPA mandated compliance regarding runoff of discharge into the rivers, lakes, and streams. This is something we have to do to be in compliance with the EPA.
Any indication of discussion? Any questions? Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion?
No indication.
Okay, all those in favor of Article 46, please signify by raising the green cards high. Okay, thank you. All, any who are opposed? Red cards? Mr. Gaynor, how did we do?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Article 46 passes. Next article.
Article 24.
Article 24. Article 24?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 24 is written. Hold on. Oh, we're passing over. Sorry. I thought we were taking care of that. All right, I changed my vote. I move to pass over Article 24.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass over Article 24. That means taking no action on Article 24. What would be the recommendation of the Finance Committee on passing over Article 24?
The Finance Committee recommends pass over.
Someone want to speak to the reasons to that?
Tom, I'll work on it. I'm still in discussions with the housing authority. What this is about is that apparently at some point Plymouth County Retirement charged them for the wages for a Halifax employee. We're trying to work out the amount that they overcharged and have the town reimburse the housing authority. But I don't have the backup materials that I would like to present to this meeting. And therefore, I certainly don't want money appropriated until that backup material is available.
Okay, again, you're being asked to pass over Article 24? Any indication of discussion? Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion?
No indication for discussion.
All those in favor of passing over Article 24, please signify by raising the green cards high. Okay, any opposed to passing over, raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor, how did we do?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 24 is passed over.
Article 8.
Article 8.
Mr. Moderator? I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $6,622 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2021 between AFSCME and AFBL CIO, Union Council 93, Local 1700, Highway Cemetery, and the town of Halifax.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 8. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Speaking to the article?
So this is the same percentage increase that the town being previously approved for non-union employees? The board of selectmen and the union negotiated a 1.6 across-the-board wage increase for the employees represented by this union.
Any indication of discussion? Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for discussion.
No indication. All those in favor of passing Article 8, please signify by raising your green cards high. Thank you. Any opposed, please raise your red cards high. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 8 passes. Next article.
Article 18.
Article 18. Article 18.
Susan Lawless, Council on Aging Director. I move that the town...
You had to move closer.
Closer, yeah. Much closer.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $4,100 for a new copier for the Halifax Council on Aging.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on the article?
The Finance Committee recommends.
The reason we're purchasing this copy machine is because we're going to start producing the newsletter internally now. And we need the copy machine in order to do that.
Thank you. Any questions or desire for discussion? Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for discussion.
Seeing none, so all those in favor of passing Article 18, please signify by raising your green cards. Thank you. Any opposed, please signify by raising your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
Passes unanimously.
Article 18 passes. Next article.
26.
Article 26. Foes by the Regional Silver Lake Committee?
So I move that the town of Halifax vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $36,000 to support a part-time school resource officer at the Silver Lake Middle School.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 26. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does not recommend.
Finance Committee does not recommend. Speaking to the article?
Yep. So Plimpton has funded this position the last year and this year to their proportionality of a part-time officer at the middle school. Right now, the town of Kingston is funding the full-time officer at the high school. So if we fund this position, it's paying our proportionality to have the police services at the middle school.
Mr. Moderator from the Finance Committee? This same article was brought last year, and the Finance Committee has the same qualms with the way that it's being proposed as well as the structure of the funding. So in terms of the procedure, you'll notice that for all of the other positions that the town pays for, all the other personnel are built into the operating budget. That was in Article 4. And as I think I mentioned previously, we don't want to establish the precedent that any department can propose the addition of new personnel through an article brought to town meeting. Because then that means that any department can add any position as an article. And if it gets voted on, then we're then funding that position. But only for the year in which the annual town meeting stands. So if the subsequent town meetings do not vote to appropriate the funding for this article, this position disappears. The other issue that the Finance Committee has is the fact that... The other issue that the Finance Committee has is the fact that allocating this funding will pay for a Kingston officer to provide this coverage. We would like to see the school district, the Kingston Police Department, our police department, Plimpton, be able to come together for an agreement that would allow us to fund that position through the assessment that we already pay for the school. So, that was back in Article 4, where we vote on the money to go to the schools. We not only want the position to be paid through that assessment, but we also want to figure out a way to more equitably distribute that patrol duty. And I, well, we understand that it's Kingston's jurisdiction. We'd like the ability to be able to have a conversation about that and not to just allocate funds through this article the same way that it was attempted to be done last year.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Yes?
So, we've had this discussion. We've, we had all the selectmen. We had the Finance Committee members present at a meeting last year. There is no other way to fund this position unless you fulfill it with a Kingston officer. We, we had the police chief look into the law of whether or not we could send an officer there, whether or not that that would work. It does not work for a school resource officer. We, we looked into that issue. The reason why I think that the town should support this outside the budget is because you actually have direct control over this position. There is no other position within Silver Lake that you have this direct control over. The reason why we're asking for this because we feel at the middle school, it's appropriate to have an officer present at the school. I would expect that the number of issues that our 7th and 8th graders are facing right now in this pandemic are even more reason to have somebody there and be open and available to them. If we put the position within the assessment, we then have to move the Kingston full-time officer inside the assessment. So, if you add these positions into the assessment, the town of Halifax will actually be spending more money for having the officers at the school than they would. This actually gives us a break on the cost. I understand the issue with it being an overtime position. Again, that's, that's not within the town of Halifax's control. I would love to be able to tell you that we could send our officer, and Plimpton can send theirs, and we'd be able to share that, but that's not doable under the school resource officer law.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews? Interested in discussing or questions?
Robert Mullin, 147 Oak Street. You mentioned the COVID and all the issues with the kids in the school. What are the councilors being paid for? We don't have officers at this level inside the school. Why should we at the middle school as well?
Rob, could you repeat that at the end?
With all the councilors and the school handling the children, why do we need the police in there doing the same thing? Sounds like we're paying twice.
So, I, I can tell you from the issues that have been brought to me during the executive sessions, there's a number of reasons that you need an officer involved, especially when it comes to social media. There's things happening outside of the school's control where you need to have a law enforcement individual involved. There are a number of issues that happen over social media. This is the ability to send pictures. You cannot recall those pictures. It can affect the children when those are sent. Things are sent around, they become viral within the school. You need somebody to be able to go and talk to them and talk to the law enforcement issues that that comes up with.
Other questions?
In the back.
Oh, yes, in the back.
Can anybody hear me?
Very nice.
I'm just curious, because I can't hear everybody else, so. This is an active police officer, weapon, et cetera?
It's an officer, yes.
Okay. That is going to be part-time resource for the support of the guidance councilors at the school?
At the middle school, so it's a-
At the middle school. So, this, this officer is going to help with the safety of the children, including the resource during the, the COVID crisis, the anomaly of that?
So, we were proposing this before the COVID crisis as well.
Okay. With the social media and all the bullying and all the other stuff that goes along with the social media, this officer is there that's going to help reduce the amount of possible liabilities or, or things that, that could occur with the schools?
I, I think it would help and be a resource for the students at the school who are now at 7th and 8th grade, who are coming together with a different, different group than just Halifax. You're combining the three towns together. I think that the number of issues that have been raised to me in executive session along with the other school committee members, I think it's a good idea to have the resource officer there.
So, it's also going to help with protection of the children in the schools?
Yes.
I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
We, we looked at this pretty hard, and Gordon's right. We went to a couple of meetings talking about this. In my opinion, there is no contest. We need a resource officer. I think it would be a huge plus to have somebody in the building, especially for the younger kids. My problem has always been how it's getting funded. I agree with the Finance Committee. It should be included in the budget. I don't see how we have any extra control because we're funding it separately. The problem is, we can't get a resource officer unless we do it this way. It's a tough call. At the end of the day, I'm in favor of the resource officer.
Other questions? Discussion?
Mr. Moderator, right there on the left.
Tom Manning, 10 Sycamore Drive. This is in the part-time position. He shows up at 7:00 AM, he leaves at after, leaves at 3:00, 3:00 PM. That's eight hours. That's a full-time officer, and I don't think we should stick around with it and, and try to cut it in half, and this is part-time, and, you know, it's a charades. It's okay. I believe he should be there. I, I back the police officer 100%, and I believe that it would be a good idea for us to, you know, let's say, split the difference with Kingston in one way or the other, and it makes a lot of sense. But let's not fool anybody. This is a full-time position, and we need it, and we know it's true. So, let's, let's just be honest with it, and no deception here, no playing games. That's, that's what's going on, and we know it. It's going to be a dedicated officer for this position. It's a great idea with all the crackpots out there today. Do you really not want to have a little bit of protection inside that school? And I think we're all for that, but, but this isn't a part-time position. This is a full-time position, and we all know it. Okay, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I just want to second what he just said. It's $108,000 a year if you go through the three towns at the same amount of the $36,000. So, how is that part-time? Are we, we might as well just fund someone full-time at those rates on when we're kicking in. I mean, it's basic math.
So, there's a, you're, you're questioning, is it a full-time position?
$36,000. What are the other towns kicking in? If Plimpton and Kingston is kicking in $36,000 apiece also, it's $108,000 a year.
Let, let's see-
And this is listed as part-time.
Let's see if we can find the answer for you.
So, so this does not include the full-time officer at the high school. This is just a part-time officer at the middle school. So, it's, $36,000 is the proportion for Halifax, and I believe it was $14,000 was the cost for the officer for Plimpton. So, it's a part-time officer because of the scheduling that the town of Kingston is using. It's not, it's not an officer that's a time, full-time to the school for the full year because the, the school year is the 180 days.
So, it's proportional to town, to town on our populations?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gaynor, any indication of further discussion?
Negative. No indication here.
Okay. All of those in favor of Article 24, please signify by raising your green cards if you're in favor of the article. All those who are opposed, please put your red cards. I'm going to ask for our counters, so, yeah.
Article 26.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said Article 24. Article 26. My apologies for that, just to be clear on that one. But I think we're going to do a standing. We're going to have our counters. I'd like to make sure we're doing this right. I was close. I think. Okay. When we get the counters, we'll- Okay, okay. Okay. All those in favor of Article 26, please signify by raising your green cards, and keep them lifted high, please, and only your green cards. Don't hold both of them up together. Okay. All of those who are opposed to Article 26, please raise your red cards high, please.
20 in favor, five opposed.
I'm sorry. Repeat that, just so I, I heard that correctly?
20 in favor and five opposed.
Article 26 passes, 72 to 41.
11.
Article 11. By the way, you're all doing terrific, just to let you know. Want to get up and stretch?
Thanks, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $4,386 to fund the provisions-
You know, you know, Mr. Garen, I love listening to your voice, but I can't hear you. You're going to have to really get on top of that microphone.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
Better?
Thank you.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $4,386 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2021 between the police chief, John Shaves, and the town of Halifax.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Article 11.
It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Okay. Speaking to the article?
This was negotiated in good faith, and if anyone knows the chief, they know he's done a great job in town here, and he's one of the lowest-paying chiefs in the area. We're just trying to bring him up to par.
Any indication of discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for discussion here.
All those in favor of article, passing Article 11, please signify by raising your green cards. Thank you. Any opposed, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 11 passes. Next article.
Article 28.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
This was a article brought forth by a town member, proposed by Ann Marie Reed. I don't know if she's present, or maybe-
I'll move it so it's read. I'll move it so it's read. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $11,000 from undesignated fund balance to grade all unpaved roads in Halifax, including private roads and unaccepted roads.
For purposes of discussion, I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee does recommend. Is that what you said? Yes?
Correct. Recommends.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the article? And, and everyone, I know, I keep forgetting to do this, even if you've multiple, you've been up multiple times, please make sure you announce your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, this is Amy Eltrup from, from Ten Hillside Avenue. My first question is going to be directed at the Finance Committee to ask why it's printed that Article 28 was not recommended and why the change.
Okay. I will attempt to get an answer for you.
The original print contains, contained no dollar amount when the Finance Committee first recommended it, so when we got the dollar amount of $11,000 in, I believe that was three or four meetings ago, we had a discussion about it and voted to recommend based on the updated figure.
Well, what about the public roads where we leave below by the side of the road, and they're literally the tar rules? So, we're going to take care of private roads before we touch the roads that we're responsible for?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
Shouldn't we be spending money on the roads that the town is actually responsible for prior to those that are private?
Okay. Gotcha.
What roads specifically are being talked about here? I'd like the list.
Given that the proposer is not here, do we have a list for this? I don't think so, do we? Without the proposer being here, alls it says is unpaved.
The highway survey is getting up that background.
Who's that? Oh, I'm sorry.
I can tell you right now, there's 26 unpaved roads. 22 of them are maintained already. We do it twice a year. By the bylaw, that's what we're supposed to be doing, and that's what we do. I don't know why all of a sudden we're going for this extra money. Is it going to come in my budget? Am I going to get this money, or is it going to be set aside for just private roads? Because as Amy said, our other roads, they, they've fallen apart, and I'm going to be spending more time on the private roads instead of working on the regular roads. What's-
Just to clarify, because I think we're going to get asked, did you say 22 of, of the 26 that are unpaved are already being-
We already do 22 of them twice a year. We grade, and now we're starting to roll them.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Other questions?
Chris Winowitz, 129-
Want to stand really close and say it again, please?
Chris Winowitz, 129 Circuit Street. I think the question that's being asked is why in the book it says we go take care of private roads and unaccepted roads also?
We have an answer for that?
Yeah. Mr. Moderator? Under the town's own bylaws, the town can make limited repairs, including grading two roads that have not been accepted or are private roads in the town. There are limits to that. They're specifically outlined in the town's bylaws, but the town is allowed to perform some maintenance functions for private roads, including unpaved roads. The article itself, of course, includes all unpaved roads, not just those owned by the town or just those that are private.
Yes?
My name is Phyllis Solenzey, and I'm 28 Cross Street. And-
My name is Phyllis Solenzey and I'm twenty-eight Cross Street and my issue with the private road thing is I have a drain right in front of my house where it just crumbles out, literally, people take the rocks and huck 'em. I mean, the roads are falling apart, all in the abs, so I think before we get into private roads, we need to concentrate on the roads that we already have problems with. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Over on the left, too.
Come to the mic.
Yep, you need to, if you're asking a question, you've gotta come to the mic. Please identify yourself in your street and speak as close to that mic as you can.
Tom Mannick, ten second more drive. I think, uh...
Mr. Hannity, you need to really step right up to that mic.
Okay.
Or we won't be able to hear you.
You got it, you got it. When we're talking about the private roads and unacceptable roads in Halifax, we're talking about roads that the fire department, the police department, emergency services, they have to use these roads. And you have a pretty, you have to have a pretty good idea of what kind of shape they're in and what you're getting yourself into and it's not just cut and dry. I believe everybody here has a legitimate beef with this article, with this article itself and, um, but there's a beefing with a lot of the articles in this book, especially with the, they talk about to raise and appropriate money. Well, very, there's a lot of them here that all of a sudden on the clear blue sky, there's no information, but all of a sudden, there's a number that comes out of the woodwork, eleven thousand, this is a lot of money. But where did that money come from? Where did that, where did that sum of money come from? Who decided it was gonna be eleven bucks, eleven thousand dollars? It doesn't seem, it seems like the money, that figure's just, they poke it, they just grab it out of the air and then it sounds like, well, I think we can get, they throw in eleven thousand dollars, go buy. And I'm not sure if it's a good idea to vote for this or not, I'm sort of like a little confused, I'm stuck in the middle. For safety purposes, I think we should have a good idea. And when you talk about sums of money to grade all unpaid roads, what are you talking about, grading them? I mean, you're gonna, at A through D and you say, oh, one is treacherous and one is not so, not so bad? I don't, there's such a big space in between that, you know, grade this and grade that. Grade what? That's what, really what the question is.
So would you like an answer to what is grading? As far as the roads are concerned?
I'd like an answer to what the grading means.
And, and the other question you had is, who came up with the amount of eleven thousand or what?
Yes, how it was appropriated at eleven thousand dollars. I'm not sure that eleven thousand dollars would be enough money, the time you have to spend to really go out and grade something in an entire town?
We'll see if we can get an answer for both those questions, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Moderator, can we ask the DJ to turn the volume up a little bit, because I can hardly hear half these people?
Understood.
And we're repeating things over again so that the highway survey already said something of what was done.
Understood, we'll do our best. Everybody needs to help us out here. So the two questions were, where did the eleven thousand, what makes up that figure, and what does it mean grading these roads, sir?
Grading the road is bringing in a motor grader and they grade the dirt roads. That's what the private road, most of the private roads are dirt roads.
I, I know, I know you know what grading means, but not everybody in the town, if I'm, if I'm correct, leveling the road?
It's smoothing the road out.
Okay, thank you.
And now we started rolling them after we graded them, so they, they lasted a little bit longer. But if we do this, you're opening up a can of worms, because now every road, anybody with a private driveway that is long, are they gonna start asking for this extra money also? And like, everybody says, the roads are falling apart in the town already and we're gonna be spending more time on the private roads. I don't understand it. There's a bylaw there for a reason and that we should go by the bylaw.
Thank you. And, and just for the sake of completion, do we have any idea where the eleven thousand came from? I know the mover of the article isn't here, so I don't know, but the, the finance committee was given the figure to add, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we don't actually know, it's someone's estimate of what it would cost. Any other questions, discussion? Yes, sir?
Mel Conroy, Seven Birch Road, uh, who provided that eleven thousand dollar number to the finance-
I'm sorry, say it nice and loud, because I'm-
Mel Conroy, Seven Birch Road, who proposed that eleven thousand dollar sum to the finance committee?
Do we have an answer of who proposed that to the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, it was Mr. Hayward from Highway.
Okay, Mr. Hayward.
Mr. Moderator, we have one that would like to ask a question in the other room.
Oh, sure, terrific, thank you, Mr. Gaynor.
Jeff Bolger, 118 Brandeis Circle. It just seems to me that instead of this kind of hodgepodge, hit or miss, um, road repair that this town constantly goes through, and in many cases, it's the squeaky wheel that gets taken care of, that we ought to have some master plan where they, where there's priorities drawn on what roads need to get taken care of. And I don't see that happening.
Mr. Moderator, just so the town is aware, in fact, the highway department is working with their engineering firm on what's called the Smart Streets Program, which is a complete assessment of all the roads in town, their conditions, need for repairs and such. So the highway department's quite aware of the idea of getting a master plan for road work in town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sealy.
Amy Tru, Ten Hillside Ave. Where does Anne Marie Reed live?
Do we know that?
I don't know if we know this.
Nope.
The principal assessor has her hand up.
Hi, I'm Holly Mary, I'm the principal assessor for the town of Halifax. Anne Marie Reed lives at Crystal Lake, Crystal Lake Road, so I think she's concerned because her house was in a fire, completely demolished a few years ago. Also, my concern is, if we don't take care of the roads, will the fire trucks make it up there? Steve?
I'm sorry, could you say that nice and loud? What was the question?
If we do not take care of the roads, the private roads, will the fire trucks be able to make it up there?
Okay, good question, I'm not so sure, I think that might be a question for the fire department, correct?
Because how long do we leave them go bad?
Okay, thank you. Any indication of other questions, discussions, Mr. Gaynor?
Dennis in the back.
You have one more, Dennis.
Adrian McDougall, thirty-two Hillside. Um, I do have a question, so there's been a couple of questions about, you know, safety, you know, fire trucks, everything like that. Don't the property owners of these private drives, um, isn't there some kind of mandate that they're required to keep them up?
Trying to find an answer for you for that.
To maintain them?
Yep.
And when they bought their houses on private roads, they agree to that?
Do we have an answer for that question?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I believe the highway survey said earlier that he's required to grade them twice a year, right now?
Not all. Um, we're not really required to, we do, by the bylaw says, we can do it up to two times a year, so yes, we do do it twice a year. We try to do it more often if we have time, but we don't have our own grader anymore, so we have to hire somebody. So that's why we're only doing it twice a year right now.
Do you know of any requirement of the private owners to take care of their drives?
Some towns do not touch the private roads, it's up to the homeowners that have to work on their own road. They bought the house on that road, that's how it is. The town of Halifax, we actually take care of it if we can or when we can, as a currency, like you said. So it's, it's one of those catch 22, if you keep on doing it, they're gonna expect it more, and if you don't do it, then it's, who's gonna take care of it? So I think we should keep it the way it is while we can do it twice a year and hopefully we can keep up with it.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. Other questions, you have other questions in your room there, Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, yes, sir, we have one.
Great.
Hi, Kimberly King, six-six-eight Plymouth Street. From what I understand, that we have a bylaws in place already, if we pass this article, are we gonna open up the town to more lawsuits that we can't afford?
That's a tough question. By passing this-
Mr. Moderator, I'm not quite sure what additional lawsuits would open up. The town, the town in its bylaws is allowed to maintain private roads to a certain extent. The extent is limited by the bylaws themselves. This is simply additional money for doing that work. It doesn't, you know, if we don't pass it, it doesn't change our, any liability, if we do pass it, it doesn't change any liability.
Thank you. Okay, I see no indication of further discussion, Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for further discussion.
Okay, all those in favor of passing Article twenty-eight, please raise your green cards. All of those who oppose Article twenty-eight, please raise your red cards. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous against.
Article twenty-eight does not pass. Next article.
Article forty-nine.
Article 49.